This conference will now be recorded.
This evening's city council meeting. Clerk, is that what you just started to record?
Yeah.
Today is Wednesday, September fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. I'd like to call this evening's meeting to order. If we could all please stand for the Pledge of Believers.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, could I have the roll call?
Councilmember Fox.
Present.
Councilmember Casper.
Here.
Councilmember Boyle.
Here.
Councilmember Strobin.
Here.
Councilmember Serbini.
Present.
Mayor Thornton.
Present. Thank you.
Next on the agenda is citizens' public comment. Clerk, do we have any comments from the audience this evening?
We do. Susie?
It should be on.
Yep.
You can take it out if you want.
No, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I'm Susie Tarrell, six twenty-eight East Eighteenth Street. I'm mayor, council.
Will you, please?
Need the mic.
I don't think it is on.
Let's.
That's.
Okay. Will you push the red button? Just hold it. I turned it on before I went there.
Under the technology.
Yes. It's great when it works.
I like when it breaks and gives me a job.
I think we all had less stress.
Oh, my God.
It was just, you had to sharpen a pencil. All you had to do was use a fine knife first.
Most people can't use knives out there, are they kidding?
The doctors in business.
Okay, at least I get to sit down now. Okay, can you hear me? Okay, I'm Susie Tarrell, six twenty-eight East Eighteenth Street. I am the Vista View HOA Secretary, and I've been asked to give an update on our President Ken Mauer's comments from the last council meeting. As you recall, he sent a letter to Brandon Farmer of Tappan E. Inc. regarding the dust issue from Stevens Hillside Farm Construction Project off of Aspen and Eighteenth. Ken pointed out the substantial dirt and dust was caused by their digging, filling, terracing, along with the noise, road over-usage, and unsafe speeds of the trucks. He quickly received a reply from his letter and told the board members that he met with Brandon Farmer, the project manager, saying that he was very nice and apologetic for the dust issue, stating that he was going to monitor and change the watering patterns so that we wouldn't have any further issue. He also agreed to wash all the houses on Bartlett Court when the work is complete around the middle of September. Ken also talked with Crystal Moore of Southwest Washington Clean Air and said that she would be monitoring the dust issue and has the ability to find Tappan E. for noncompliance. Ken's been on vacation, so I don't know if he's had further communication or not, but the issue hasn't gone away. In fact, most of us in that neighborhood think it's gotten worse. The trucks haven't slowed down, and if there was a mobile police radar trailer, like was talked about at the last meeting, you know, that shows how fast they're going, I haven't seen one, and I walk that area twice a day. So it's like, I didn't know they're getting near the end of the project, and they're wanting to really hurry, and so they're flying down Aspen. And when they hit the dirt, man, they speed up, and the dust just goes crazy. So I appreciate that they were apologetic and that they want to, that they offered to wash those houses, because I think there's twelve to fifteen in that area. And so that's, that's great, but there's lots of other neighborhoods that could use that, too. I mean, at least there's the tree line between, you know, foothills. That's a little bit of a buffer, but, you know, the dust is thick, and it's not just the houses. It's the cars, the patios, the decks, the plants. Yeah, yeah, it's, it's not good. So I didn't have a timer up there, so I can keep going.
Well, I have a timer.
Thank you.
Al?
Yeah.
Al, phone, one five two West Fifteenth Street. Loud number, everybody. Okay. Okay, Saturday, the American Asian Riders, Captain one sixty-eight, is putting on a ride that starts Ailene and goes to Territoria Park of Amboy. There, they're gonna have vendors and booths and everything else. That's behind the museum up there, not very with Territoria Big Park. And the route they're taking is from Ailene, La Center Road, zip highway to Hayes Route, you know, on up to Amboy. And so what I'd like to see is around ten o'clock. Supposedly, they're supposed to leave at ten o'clock, but again, they've got, you know, some speechifying and stuff to do up there. And so I would imagine it's gonna be a few minutes after ten o'clock before they get here. You know, the motorcycles, cars, anything else that, you know, it's a ride. They've got people, you know, checking in and everything. This is a fundraiser for, basically, horse therapy. People with BTS, veterans with PTSD and whatnot, you know, go to a place and ask horses and things and whatever they have to do. And so what I'd like to see is anybody who's got time, even out there, you know, it's, it's put on Facebook, you know, just come down on the city highway anywhere and watch them go by. I knew the Asian Riders, they, they really appreciate when they have, you know, an audience or whatever, you know, going by. Okay, glad you listened, Mary.
Sorry, you said that was on Saturday, Al?
Saturday.
Okay.
Yeah.
Around ten, around ten, a little after, yeah. Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Jason?
Good evening. I've been resident of La Center for forty-six years.
Excuse me, Ethan, if you could please give us your address.
Six one one East Sixth Street.
Thank you.
I have a question on what type of animals a person can have in the city limits. I have a neighbor who has these eight hogs, thirty chickens, and ducks, and they roam all over the place. They're not pinned, there's nothing. They come and defecate in my yard that I work very hard to keep clean. And I want to know what the rules are on that. And then if that person is, you know, not doing the correct thing, what can we do to stop this? So.
Okay, Ethan, well, I appreciate your questions and I surely do understand your concerns. So as a policy, we don't engage, the council won't engage with you this evening to answer those questions. Our Public Works Director will be in touch with you, and we're familiar with the problem that you're having. So, yeah, Brian Cast, our Public Works Director, will be in touch with you, so.
All right.
Yep.
Thank you.
One question. How many animals is that again?
She's got about eight hogs, uh, close to thirty ducks and chickens.
Wow.
Three dogs.
Any gate? Any gate at all? No gate system at all?
Nothing. They, they always break out.
Totally.
Pictures, I've got video camera footage.
Yeah.
The hog is big. It takes two of us to pull it out.
Oh, my gosh.
And a shopping. So it's just frustrating.
Oh, I bet. It makes total sense.
Did you have something?
Yeah.
I was gonna say, follow up with his name.
Great, good, yep. I appreciate you bringing that forward. Thank you.
Randy Williams?
I'm Randy Williams. I live at six twenty E Sixth Street, almost across the street from Jason, but not quite. But I run into the same problem. When I moved into La Center in nineteen ninety-four, moved into the Stone Creek subdivision, and we were told that when that was complete, the city streets would be donated, the streets of, of the Stone Creek Association would be donated to the city. And I presume that they all have, except for my little cul-de-sac at the end of Sixth Street. And as a result, our neighbor, our neighbor has allowed animals, goats, dogs, chickens, ducks, ducks, geese, pigs, and once a cow.
Oh, my gosh.
Fortunately, the cow was only there a day or two, but, you know, the pigs have been promised to be gone, and they have not been gone. And they run free. They roam these streets, they roam into my yard. Last time the pigs were in my yard, I went over to our neighbor that is responsible, and, and she chased them out and brought me a dozen eggs. And I said, I don't want the eggs, I want responsibility. No one is holding this neighbor responsible for her animals to run free. Because she feels that the cul-de-sac is partly owned, is private property, she now has laid a log in the street and has put down plants. My understanding, the cul-de-sac was supposed to be designed for fire trucks and so forth to turn around, you know. Now, unfortunately, she is invited a couple families who are homeless, who are now living in the street, in the cul-de-sac. And, you know, my fear is that with the animals defecating all over the place, that this is a health hazard besides the smell. The smell can be very horrible. We, I talked with one neighbor, they say they can no longer sit on their porch because of the smell of the pigs and the animals. I no longer can open my windows at night because the, the north wind blowing into my window brings that smell. We can't allow La Center, and we've worked hard for a nice, clean, quiet community. We cannot allow La Center to degrade into an unfit place. I don't want it to become a slump. I don't want my neighbor to become a slump. We don't need that. And I hope that, I presume I'll be talking with you, and, you know, I hope that the council will take serious concern on that. Thank you.
What was your address again? I'm sorry, I know we don't engage, but what's your address?
Six twenty E Sixth Street, the offending property of six thirteen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jim Irish?
Good evening, Council, this is the program of Washington, Illinois. I'm very busy. Only have three items.
Jim. Jim. Jim, can we maybe have you go to the microphone, just because we can't hear you?
I forgot my hearing is maybe louder for me. Yes. And my name is Jim Irish, sixteen fifty-three East Heritage Loop, La Center, Washington. One of the things I wanted to talk about was the development of La Center. Back in two thousand and five, we got interested, people coming to the city council and asking about what we were gonna do. And so we got a group of associates together, Morgan Foster Consultants, lead-in associates, Brenner, and we started talking about what the people had brought forward. And then we had a series of public meetings or open houses where they could come and talk and see what was being proposed and offer their opinions. And from that, the consultants went together, and they put out a community, La Center Downtown Design Planning Guidelines. Now, I asked if this had been shared with council a couple times, not just you guys, but before. And they all said, no, this is out of date, we don't use, we don't need this. But this is what the citizens wanted at the time, and this is what they talked about. And yes, this is a draft form because it was, it was meant to be a draft form so that it could be acted upon and made into a living document. But it's been in the dark alcoves for quite a while. The second thing is the traffic. The traffic in La Center, as you well noticed, just over the weekend, if not every single day, but when they had the fire and the accident, one of the many accidents north of Woodland, up by Woodland, where the traffic was so bad going north on I five that people were turning off at the one hundred and seventy-ninth street exit to come up Timmins or any other highway to come in other than the freeway, which made it absolutely abhorable trying to get through Timmins into the city and going across the bridge and up Pacific Highway. And then they had a little fricassee up there, up by, on, by Amboy, the turnoff to go to Amboy. And it took people half an hour to go from La Center to Amboy, I mean, to the turnoff there on, on Pacific Highway. That's all fine and dandy for a growing community, but I haven't, in the past, talking, we have over two hundred and thirty-five single-family dwellments being developed, constructed and completed. And then you have the multiple housing units, the four of them, fifth one being worked on right now, going in there in the rearview. And I asked whether it's been done as far as the road construction on North Highway, or Pacific Highway, and coming through the center. And they said, oh, well, the planning commission worked on that, and we're, we're gonna get it all answered. Well, Aspen Road is another example of that. With the trucks coming through there, the road is becoming segregated, it's falling apart. North Pacific Highway is getting bad. Well, it's something that needs to be looked at, and it's something that needs to be addressed. And the only thing that would help that, one of the things that would help that even more so is if we had a police force or an active citizens' police, or citizens' helpers.
Excuse me, Jim, three minutes have expired. If you could, please try to wrap it up.
I will. The other, the only last, third thing I have is that next Thursday, the twenty-second, is the first day of autumn. And I would like to, as you all know and have read the board, Thursday is, is the Meals on Wheels night day. And it would be extremely wonderful if we could have people that cared about, not only about the city of La Center, but the residents in La Center, the older ones, being able to come to it. And so on the first day of autumn, I would like to personally invite anybody and everybody that wants to to come in and at least say hi to the staff and the people that do attend. And with that, I happen to say goodbye. Thank you.
Thank you.
What time is that, Jim, the Meals on Wheels on Thursday?
Meals on Wheels is eleven thirty to one.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have any other people on the list?
No other people on the list?
Okay, well, if anybody in the audience would like to speak, please step up the microphone.
Al Louise, twenty-one eighty-eight East Gaither Avenue. Two things I wanted to bring up this evening. One was the wetlands that are located up behind Eighteenth Street and adjacent to the two side streets. For years, we've had, that area has been maintained with weed abatement and grass abatement. We haven't had that done in two years. I was concerned it's a fire hazard. I realize we're now starting to go into the fall, but we've always had that taken care of. When I was on council, the owners of the property at that time, if they would not do it, the city did it, and then we would build the, the owners, and it needs to be looked at and done. I, I'm afraid one of these days, we're gonna have a fire back there that's gonna be severe. And then the other, one other thing I wanted to bring up was the condition of the roads here in town. We've done a good job of crack sealing the streets, but I think the city is looking really rough because that's all you see is patchwork. And I think it's, we need to be looking at the council to bringing our roads back up to where they were for years and get a top seal coat on the roads to make them look like we, our community, that takes pride. And with that, I thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that's present this evening that would like to address the city council? Okay, thank you again for your comments. So if there's any citizens that are calling in this evening, and we have a telephone caller, if you would like an opportunity to speak right now, this is your time. If you could remember to press star six before you make your comment, and then unmute yourselves to speak. Do we have any callers, clerk? Okay. Okay, not hearing any. We'll move on to the third option for folks. Are there any comments that need to be read into the?
No comments to be read.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. So that concludes citizens' public comment. Next on the agenda are, is the consent agenda. If there are no requests for any items to be removed, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'm gonna request that we remove the general sewer plan update to be discussed.
Okay. Any other questions on the consent agenda council? So that will get moved on to item one point nine, items to remove from the consent agenda. We'll talk about that later in the meeting. With that, could I get a motion to approve the balance of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda with health and general sewer plan update included. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? abstained? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We have no presentations or proclamations this evening, so the next item on the agenda is the mayor's report. I have a few items I want to share with council this evening. First of all, I've got a few reminders here. First, at the next city council meeting, September twenty-eighth, we will be having a work session prior to the city council meeting. That will begin at five thirty, and the topic will be capital projects. Just a reminder to the council that we will be having a city council retreat Saturday, Saturday, September twenty-fourth, and that will be beginning at nine AM. And I anticipate it to go into the early afternoon. My next mayor's town hall will be on Wednesday, October fifth. It'll begin at six PM, and it'll be here at City Hall. Also, the city's next budget advisory committee, budget advisory committee meeting will be Thursday, September twenty-ninth. And I believe we'll be starting that at nine, or excuse me, at three o'clock in the afternoon. And I will make sure that Maria gets all the reminder to everybody that's on the budget advisory committee meeting, Budget Advisory Committee. Also, Association of Washington Cities will be hosting a Cities on Tap event on October eighteenth from five to seven PM. It'll be held at the Ridgefield City Council Chambers. And this will be an opportunity for city leaders to hear vital information for the two thousand and twenty-three upcoming year for the legislative agenda from AWC. And it's also gonna be a great opportunity to network with other city leaders from cities in and around North Clark County. Also, the Greater Vancouver Chamber will be hosting a twentieth legislative delegation meet and greet on Tuesday, September twenty-seventh, from five to six PM. Again, this will be at the Ridgefield Outdoor Recreation Complex, and it'll be held in the community room there. And as I understand it, Senator Braun will be there, Representative Abrano, and Representative Orca will be there, will give us all a chance to meet our legislative representatives in the twentieth district. I just want to update the council that I did have a short meeting with the city manager of Ridgefield yesterday. Also met with the mayor of Ridgefield, Mayor Lindsay. And just to get an update on the police contract that the city is working with right now with Ridgefield. Steve Stewart, the city manager, his next step is he would like to see a, it's, it's gonna be, he would like to get a third party to take a look at the proposed agreement between La Center and, and Ridgefield. And I don't know if you know this, but Ridgefield just recently had a complete assessment of their police department. Of course, La Center, we've had a complete assessment of our police department. So I anticipate that it's gonna be something where we could just get a consultant to take a look at those two assessments, basically do some high-level reconciliation of those. And, and Steve Stewart's concern is he just wants to make sure that we're not missing anything, we're asking all the right questions, and we have all our bases covered. So Steve will be meeting with Jeff Swanson really next week or later this week, tomorrow, to, to work on the scope of that, that part of the project. And once we have that done, opening that forward to the city council. But the city manager assured me that it's high on his priority list. He wants to move it forward, and he's also sensitive to the fact that we're both working on our two thousand and twenty-three budgets. So this is something that he wants to get accomplished in the near term. If the council has not visited the city's website recently, I would encourage you to do that. It's been completely updated. The city staff has done an excellent job of making some huge improvements, and I'm, I'm very much impressed. It's not that we really spent a lot of money on having a new website designed. It's just that we worked with the system that we had, and they've done a very good job of updating that. It's way. What's that?
Oh, it was someone who was logging on, but they're muted now.
Okay. So I would encourage everybody to take a look at that. And again, the city staff did a great job on getting that all put together. And if you haven't noticed, at the List Center Junction, the Minute Management Convenience Store has been demolished. I just want to reassure everybody that it's not going to stay like that. The plan is to completely redevelop that property. And Minute Management is going ahead with their project to build the Hampton Inn. It's a 105 room hotel along with a new convenience store and some other properties that they plan on developing at the junction. So I'm really excited that they have started that project. And of course, we want to all wish them the best of luck and every continued success. They've been a great partner with the city for many years and it's really going to be a big improvement for List Center Junction. So it's, it's awesome. I just also want to bring to the council's attention that last Sunday, and you may not know this, but all the mayors of the center meet once a month for a meeting and dinner. We typically do it on a Sunday afternoon and we rotate amongst the cities. Every, every month, a mayor hosts the other mayors from other cities in Clark County. So they're very informative meetings. It's an opportunity for the mayors to all talk about issues that impact all the cities in the center. And we, it's very lively conversation and very informative. But one of the issues that came up at, on Sunday's meeting that I want to share with the council is that the governor right now for the 2023 budget is working on having more of a regional training academy for law enforcement in and around the state of Washington. And one of the areas that we'd like to see a regional training center be built would be in southwest Washington. So that was discussed with the mayors and all the mayors pretty much agreed that by the end of this month, so we'll be doing it for the second meeting in September, to have a resolution expressing the city council's support for a criminal justice commission, regional police training campus in southwest Washington. So at the, on our next agenda, we will have a resolution that's going to be presented. It's really going to be to support having an academy here in southwest Washington. And I can't imagine any of the cities are going to be opposed to that. It'd be a great, great amenity for us to all here. And then I also just want to mention, and this really pertains to the comments that former mayor Irish brought up this evening about transportation issues and some of the traffic issues that we're having here in Clark County. And yesterday, the Washington State Transportation Commission was actually, they had meetings in battleground yesterday and today. Yesterday's meetings were primarily for cities in North Clark County, but they did have a, a meeting in battleground and all the cities in North Clark County had an opportunity to meet with the commissioners and the staff from the Washington State Transportation Commission and do presentations regarding what their transportation issues are for their individual cities. And then, of course, we also talked about more on a regional basis as well. And our public works director, Brian Cast, he presented the program for List Center as did most, all the public works directors for the other cities as well. And it was actually very well done, but there was also a presentation done by Matt Ransom. And he's the executive director for the Southwest Regional Transportation Council. And I thought he did an excellent job of really, at a high level, in a rather short period of time, address the very issues that Jim brought up earlier about all the challenges that we have as a county as we continue to grow from a more rural environment to a more urbanized environment. And it's a, it's a, it's a topic that's being heavily discussed by the county, all the cities, and of course, the state of Washington as well. So we're all well aware of it. It's, you know, funding is the big issue. You know, where does the money come from to build all this infrastructure? And then how do we prioritize it as well? So I want to mention that because you can actually go and listen to it. It was recorded, it was broadcast live and recorded on, I think it's TV. Let's see, what is it? TVW.org. So if you want to watch it, I would encourage you to do that, especially Matt Ransom's presentation. Again, I thought he did a very good job of outlining what needs to be done here at the county level. And again, I want to thank Brian for his excellent presentation that he did as well. A little bit more than I normally say, so pardon me for going on and on here. But that's all I have this evening, council. Do you have any questions for me?
I do, actually. The police report you just gave, what options are we exploring with them? Are we exploring the same coverages that the listener residents have had before the police shortage?
With, I'm sorry, I didn't hear the first.
Same type of coverage? Are we gonna, are we still exploring the same type of coverage that we were always used to having?
Yes, yeah, absolutely. So, yeah, what the center's working towards is to entering into a contract with the city of Ridgefield for the city of Ridgefield to provide law enforcement services to the city of the center. But in that contract, we would scope out exactly what our service needs would need to be. And yes, we will continue to have the same level of service that we have enjoyed in the past. In fact, I think we'll actually have a higher level of service than we have in the past because Ridgefield has grown to a population base and they're able to have things in their department that List Center was never able to have. So I think ultimately, when we get this all put together, that List Center will end up with a contract that would provide to the city of the center a higher level of service than what we've had in the past. And of course, the key part of that is it's, it would be at a lower cost because there's a lot of efficiencies as you can find when you're combining departments.
And they don't, they don't have any concerns on hiring police officers to fulfill that at this point?
Well, they wouldn't have any concerns because that's what our contribution would be used for them to hire those additional patrol officers, yeah. So it's not going to really cost Ridgefield anymore.
Well, then why wouldn't we just do our own at that point? That, that's, that doesn't make any sense to me.
You're only adding people, you're not hiring a whole department.
Right, but that's not what he was just talking about.
Because they're also saying that we don't have the infrastructure.
Well, the thing is, is
Up to date infrastructure, that's.
The city of Ridgefield, what we would be able to do is, is we would be able to combine the, the, the different levels of management, okay? So rather than List Center having a police chief, Ridgefield would have a police chief that would oversee the contract for the city of List, List Center. Ridgefield has an assistant police chief that would be available, help manage that department. They have a detective that List Center did not have, and they have a detective that would be available. They have the clerks and the, all the staff that's needed to take care of the daily reports, which we did have staff people in the past, but again, that would consolidate all those needs into one department and it would be way more efficient for the city of Ridgefield and the city of the center to work collaboratively on those things. The center would pay their proportionate share for what those services would be, but it would, we would not have to go out and hire all those FTEs again and then continue to meet all the state mandates that are coming down from the state for additional training and all the different requirements that are being required of police departments. We're just a small city and we can't really get that network put together like we've had in the past. It's, it's changed significantly here just in the last few years. I anticipate that it's going to continue to change and get to be more burdensome for small cities. And this is, this is something that's happening all over the state. I think we're going to see more and more of small agencies combining with each other in order to be able to provide the services that are going to be necessary. But of course, staffing is a critical issue and filling those positions is going to be a challenge. But that's all going to be part of the negotiations as we go forward and those are all things that have been worked on now for some time already.
Yeah, okay, thank you, mayor.
So I hope that answers your questions. Does anybody else have any questions?
I mean, I'm guessing that if they're having trouble hiring people like we would be, is there a timeline that they have to fulfill these placements in order to even fulfill what we need? I mean, center's obviously signing a contract and then they, I mean, can take so long to just hire people because they're at a, it's not, it's out of their control as well.
Right.
So is this, is the closest training facility in Grusham? I know there's one there. Is there another one?
No.
No, the closest one is in Bierian.
Oh, I know some, okay, well.
Well, that's Oregon, so since we're in Washington, we have to go to the Washington Academy.
Oh, I see, you can't just, oh, oh, okay, okay.
I think one of the points that the mayor is trying to make is that the, the net number increase for the city of Ridgefield to cover this contract would be about four employees, give or take, depending on what the contract comes out as versus doing a startup again here would be an additional six to, to 10 employees. The, the risk that they're taking obviously is being able to fulfill that, that quota of, of employees that they would have to hire. They could, and so very likely what will happen is it would be a, a kind of a staggered approach. They would add services and we would pay for services as they're able to hire and train the staff. Because even if they were able to hire four people, you know, on day one of the contract, it's 18 months before those officers are usable, before they're any good to anybody. It takes, it takes a long time. So there'll be a, there'll be a pretty delayed ramp up period for that. Because of some of the legislative issues that, that came up over the last two years, the mayor's right, there's going to be an awful lot of small agencies that in the past have used either reserves or volunteer officers that there won't be any reserves in the, in the state any longer because they can't meet the, the minimum of training standards. A lot of, a lot of smaller cities that have a population of less than what we have here even are probably going to end up contracting with either neighboring larger cities or sheriff's offices. So I think what, what the mayor and the chief are working on is going to become pretty common across the state, so.
Thank you for that, Casey. You've spoken like somebody that's involved with law enforcement in Clark County. So, yeah, it's, I just want to reassure everyone that we're moving forward with it. It's not stagnant, everybody's working on it, Chief Richardson's working on it. City managers are working on it, we're, we're moving it forward.
Agreed, I just, I like to know a little bit of that information that's being worked on. Not just a couple of little brief comments, I like to hear some of the inner workings of it, especially since this has been ongoing for a year and a half.
Yeah, I mean, it's, we kind of flew into the perfect storm there, for sure, right? No question. It's unfortunate that it worked out the way it did with all the different events that happened after we started the process, not just here in Washington, but all over the country with police departments and policing. And it's, yeah, we've lost so many law enforcement yeah, officers, you know, whether they're deputies or troopers or police officers. It's a, it's really unfortunate what's happened, has happened, but that's what we're dealing with right now. And it's a challenge for, for everyone.
Yep. Maybe Jeff, since he's been dealing with this, are you guys still in talks with Ridgefield? And for our current police officers, are they going to be offered positions or anything like that to be taken care of? So Chief Richardson is on and he may be able to speak to, he's been discussing issues with the chief in Ridgefield about more of the operational details.
I, I can't see him, so I would have asked him, yeah.
I think he, he is on go-to, so maybe he can speak to that. I've been working with the city manager on some of the policy level issues. So I can't necessarily speak to what the discussion has been with respect to their absorbing our current workforce.
Okay.
If you can hear me, I can comment on that.
We can hear you.
Please. Very good, chief.
Thank you very much. I apologize, my wife had a knee replacement yesterday, so I'm the nurse at home here today. With that being said, yes, that is a discussion we have to have during our contract negotiations. And not only are contract negotiations between our city and the city of Ridgefield, but since these employees are represented employees, we also have to have an internal conversation with the guild and the city. So there's, it'll be, have to be two conversations going on kind of simultaneously and then we have to come to some kind of agreement. So that's kind of where we are right now. It's a little preliminary to talk about the employees before we get into the actual contract. The mayor was correct about Ridgefield has more resources. They don't have a detective position yet filled, but I believe they got one in their, their budget this last year. So we could actually have investigative follow-up and we would pay proportionate, a proportionate part of that. So if we had, if they had 100 cases a month in a total between us and they had 70, we had 30, we'd pay 30% of the detective salary. So those are the kinds of things we're looking at. As far as the ability to recruit, Ridgefield hasn't had a problem. They actually have one opening with one person in backgrounds right now. They have a really good contract and they have a city that's got a lot of growth and they have take-home police cars as part of their package. And then, you know, just to give you an idea, if we had to, if we offered our employees a fully staffed police department with take-home police cars, we would have to, we would have to double our fleet. And, you know, so you would have to have eight cars total and the new car is about, you know, $70,000, $80,000 fully loaded. So those are the kinds of things where we would get cost savings. So those are things we need to think about because we, everything would be proportionate. So I hope that answers your, your question, Councilmember Strobin.
It does, thank you, chief.
I have a quick question. Is there any reason why they might back out? Is there any energy of hesitancy or any percentage that they are maybe not interested? Are we at like a 90/10?
That's a hard question for me to answer. You remember that we've gone through a long process, you know, like Councilmember Strobin said, we've been at this a year and a half. We had to educate their community, we had to educate the council, we had to educate ourselves. And they have to go through the kind of the same process. So they're at the front of, of a process that we're kind of at the back end. And nobody's ever given me any idea that they're hesitant in the sense that they just don't want to make a snap decision. So we do have, you know, we have been working on trying to find a third party consultant. I do have a name that I'm going to give to Jeff that he can see if that's something that we can work with. I think it would be a good fit because it's a city manager from another jurisdiction. So I think maybe hopefully the city manager at Ridgefield would be more comfortable harrying it from another city manager. So we are working on something like that. We're moving as quick as we can. And, you know, there's a lot of stuff obviously going on with Ridgefield because obviously they're trying to, they've got a police chief that's, that's leaving, they've got to make sure they've got somebody in that, in place. So a lot of moving parts, we're trying to make it work and go as quick as we can because I know everybody has concerns and everybody gets frustrated at the, the glacial pace of government.
Okay, so who's paying for that consultant specifically? Is that 100% List Center, I'm guessing?
No, we haven't even got to that part yet. First of all, we have to agree that they need a consultant. Like I've told you before, our position has been that, hey, we really have all the data there. But with that being said, if it takes a consultant, then we'll have to sit down with Ridgefield and say, okay, are you going to pay 100%? Are we going to do it proportionally? How do you want to do it? I can tell you that the person that I think we're going to deal with is not going to be, it's not going to take a long time. it's not going to take a long time. They've indicated it'd be a pretty quick process. And obviously, if we had to pay for a consultant, we would come back to the mayor and, and council and explain everything to you. But I, we would never have to pick up 100% of it. I don't, I wouldn't, let's put it this way, my proposal would be that we didn't pick up 100% of the consultant. It, you know, the very best way is either they pay for the consultant or we pay, we split the costs 50-50. Whatever it makes, whatever it works out to make things work. But again, like I've said before, the city manager over there would like a consultant and we have to kind of, you know, agree with him and, but also give him our perspective that we think we've got the brain power between our city, their city and, and other people in the county that we can move forward without a consultant. But then again, we, you know, this is part of the dance that we have to do to make everybody happy.
Sure, makes sense.
So real quick, I got two questions to that now. The chief over there is retiring. Does he have to sign off on this? Or are we going to have to wait for a new chief to come in and say, yeah, we want to do this? I, I understand the city manager is going to be involved, but don't they have to involve the police chief for that?
Well, they have the acting police chief. That's Lieutenant over there is now the acting police chief. When, when Police Chief Brooks leaves, she's been there forever. She's a resident of Richfield. She's been, you know, she's been informed of this process along the way. But at the end of the day, it's really the city council and city manager's decision what they want to do. The police chief has to, you know, the police chief will provide guidance, but it's not the police chief that makes the ultimate decision whether or not we do this. It's really the, a council decision, city manager council decision over there.
So do you think it's good for us to go to the Richfield City Council meetings then and to speak?
I think let's not get ahead of the city manager and let's let the city manager.
No, I just need to like ask, like that we would, yeah, that we're just like a friendly hello and that we're here to say hello.
I don't have, you know, like I've told everybody before, it's always good to have good communications with your neighboring councils to have good dialogue. But in an official capacity, I would suggest that we wait until the city manager brings his city council up to speed, just like the mayor brought our city council up to speed and then we move forward with that. I know that some city council members have reached out to other council members, you know, had lunch, met them for coffee, that's great, that's fine. I think you need to have those dialogues to see where people are coming from. And so I certainly wouldn't discourage anybody from reaching out to their counterparts in another city. I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, I, I'm, now I'm confused because you were one of the people that told us to do this, I think during the mayor's absence at one point. Are we not to contact and push forward?
No, I think what the chief is saying is that, you know, any engagement that council members have from one city with another city is, I think, very, very informative. In fact, I think it's, you know, to regularly meet with city council members, whether it's in Richfield or get to know those city council members in Vancouver or Camas, Washego. I think that's one of the greatest, you know, reasons to go to AWC conferences and AWC meetings because you really do get a chance to network with people. It's just that council members have to remember that these negotiations that are taking place are, you know, from the, it's, it's a government-to-government type negotiation. So it's not like the council members in Richfield are going to sit down and say, well, this is what we think it should look like, or our council member should say, this is what we think we should look like. The details need to be worked out by city staff and professional consultants in this case. And then once that's put together, then the cities will come, the individual cities will come back to their councils with a presentation and a general outline and that's going to be up to the, it's a policy decision at the end of the day. It's going to be the city council's decision to make that policy decision. However, you have to, you know, there has to be, it's, it's not like you can negotiate something that you're going to vote on. You have to stay pretty much independent and uninvolved with that part of it.
Sure, of course.
Yeah. Thank you. Did that come out right, Bronson? Did I explain that okay or?
Yeah, I would just remind councils, I have in the past, that keeping our respective roles in mind and the council's a policymaking body. And if you engage with council members from Richfield, you know, they're policymakers as well and it's perfectly fine for you to have conversations with them on a policy level. But what I would discourage you from doing is negotiating terms of a contract. I mean, that's not your role, you know? Staff and American propose terms to you and you can approve them or not, but.
Of course.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, I think the biggest thing to keep in mind with this particular issue is, is that Richfield is essentially taking all of the risk and we're the ones that are in, in need of, of that service. And, you know, to an extent, we have to be, well, we have to be patient with, with them and follow what it is that they want to hear in order to be satisfied. And, you know, I, I would be very surprised if they are not watching all of these city council meetings as it leads up to making those, those decisions after the, you know, especially after staff starts working on terms of, of the contract. So, you know, I think the biggest thing that we can do is, is be unified as a, as a council that this is, you know, just like our, our proclamation that we made a couple of months ago is, that's what we are, are standing by and this is what is best for public safety in the city of La Center. And moving forward, we, we want to make sure that we're encouraged, encouraging our staff to come up with the best possible contract for us while understanding that, that Richfield is taking all of the risk in this, in this endeavor of it. So, and again, it's kind of the way everything is going in the, in the state now anyway, following the last couple of legislative sessions. So, anyway, that's kind of my thought on the, on the whole thing.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? I know this is weighing heavily on lots of people's minds and it's something that the city is diligently working towards. It's, it's been a long process, it's taken a lot longer than we ever would have imagined. But I can tell you that city staff here is doing everything they can to move this forward. Mr. Swanson and Chief Richardson are doing, I think, a great job in trying to continue to move this forward. And, and I do think that, you know, Richfield is taking a good, hard look at it. And I'm very hopeful that we'll be able to ultimately put something together because I do think that would be the best fit for La Center, given what our many, many, many years of working together in the past. It's, you know, the, the two departments have worked in a lot of ways seamlessly for many years. So it's, it should hopefully work out going forward. Okay, with that, well, unless there's any other questions, I do not want to breeze over this, but I do want to reassure everybody that the city is working very diligently on this. As far as I'm concerned, it's the highest priority item that we have working on right now.
Agreed.
Okay. Okay. So again, thank you, everyone. Next is the city attorney's report. City attorney, do you have anything for us this evening?
I'm going to be very brief. Things have been very quiet on the legal front since our last meeting, so not a lot to report. I am going to be going to the Washington State Association of Municipal Attorneys Conference on September 28th, 29th, and 30th. So I won't be here on the 28th, but I can join you by phone or maybe by GoToMeeting. We'll, we'll see what I have available. This is in Chalhoun, so I'll be a little ways away. But it's a great conference. There's a couple hundred city attorneys and assistant city attorneys who attend this conference every year. It's very economical and a good way just to sit down for three days and compare notes. I'll see you in a month.
Nothing on Riverside?
No, we got our title, title policy and I, I sent it on to Maria and staff. So, yeah, sorry. I know you're disappointed.
Okay, thank you, Bronson. Any questions for the city attorney this evening, council? Okay, next are council member comments. Councilmember Fox.
Good evening, welcome. Notice it's already getting darker outside, so let's be, you know, definitely mindful of, I went on a jog two nights ago and I realized, oh my gosh, it was way darker and faster than I anticipated and I was wearing all black and I literally turned around and had to go back home. So let's all be mindful because, woo, it's getting fall. So I'm just watching for those. And also, I don't see enough pedestrians using our push-button crosswalks. They are there, we've invested in them, let's please use them. Goodness sakes, I just, I see so many people that don't use them, please use them, especially as we're transitioning into darker days. So also too, I just want to say thank you so much for people coming up, to the mic people showing up and to bringing your concerns. I see a lot of people write stuff on Facebook, that's not a place to talk about city business and to complain, you know? If you really want to be involved and make a change, you got to show up and talk. So, you know, I'm really, you know, I see the trucks going up, you know, last couple nights ago on a walk, you know, there's five, three, four of them. No, sorry, not at night, it was during the day, sorry. But they were going up and that was a different run. This time I wasn't wearing all black. But yeah, they were, so I hope that those concerns are. I'd love to follow up with the city in the next week and see how, you know, what's, what's happening about that. In addition to, I'm totally aware that if you live in the city of Limits and you are in a cul-de-sac and it's labeled private road, that the city can still take action against things just because you're not labeled. So I hope that that sounds like a long-term journey because it's not just animals, it's also obviously homeless people and people that obviously don't want to get rid of this. So it's not going to be like she's just going to give up and give up her animals overnight. So I'm definitely going to follow up because I think it's an important thing that, you know, we watch out for. So thank you, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Councilmember Casper.
Well, you said what I was going to say too, so thank you.
That always happens, I know, that's why I'm number one.
I do look forward to, to hearing some of the ideas that, that Brian Cast has for some of the solutions or some of the solutions for, for the issues that were brought up tonight. And on that, I think I've, I think I've said enough, so thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Boyle.
Yeah, so it just trickles on down. I agree with what Melissa was saying about, you know, the Aspen thing. I did after the last meeting drive up there and kind of take a peek at what was going on and the dust is pretty egregious. I have some friends that live up there too and, yeah, I think it's definitely something that needs to be followed up with. I did have, not regarding this issue up off of Sixth here, but somebody else reached out to me about homeless issues and were asking me if we had any resources as far as dealing with that, whether it be to get them help, take them to shelters. And I didn't really have an answer for them, but I think it's something that we could try and at least come up with a solution as far as, you know, not encouraging homeless people to be, you know, taking place in our public property in our city. Other than that, later this month, I'll be attending the CTRAN Composition Review Board Committee Meeting. And hopefully, we had CTRAN here about a month ago to kind of talk about that and hopefully that'll get all finished up. And that's about all I got.
Very good. Thank you. Councilmember Stroben.
No, I have to agree with everyone. And Sean, yeah, to, to your comment, I seen somebody that was homeless or presumed to be homeless walking in the middle of the La Center Road today, so with no shoes on. Yeah, it's definitely not something you want to see because that person could end up dead real easy. There's another issue that was brought to my attention and, and I don't know, I don't know other people's thoughts on it, but for me, it poses some big risks. So one of our local stories here is selling an herbal extract called kratom. Any kid can buy it. It's not illegal for them to buy. There was a, or I guess I should go into it. So kratom is believed to act on opiate receptors. Low doses, kratom acts as a stimulant, making users feel more energetic. At higher doses, it reduces pain and may bring on euphoria. At very high doses, it acts as a sedative, making users quiet and sleepy. It's been compared to heroin. Depending on what the plant and the health of the user take in the kratom, it can be very dangerous. And the plants vary greatly in the gauge of the effect of the given dose. They are talking about seizures, high blood pressures, there are withdrawals just like regular drugs. This is stuff that our children can actually walk in and purchase. Your seven-year-old can go in and buy this. And it's legal. There was a Senate Bill 5743 that was introduced on the 67th legislative season. It was introduced and that's where it stayed, it has not passed. That doesn't mean that we can't limit the use or the sale of products like that in our city.
You can get it on the internet too.
Yeah. Yeah, the internet as well. I just want people to be aware of that. It's very concerning to me if your child can walk into that Shell station or the Chevron or whoever is selling it at that point in time and just buy it and go off and get high on herbs, that, that's pretty concerning to me. I don't know what the fix is, I don't know what the next steps would be, but hopefully there's some interest in looking deeper into it in the near, very near future before we find out some of those consequences of it.
What's that called again?
Kratom.
Kratom?
Yes.
Let's see.
KR, yes. With that, that is my comment tonight. I appreciate the time.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing that forward. Councilmember Serbene.
I have no additional comments.
Okay.
It, with the kratom thing, is that something that we can formulate some sort of policy or is, how does, how does that?
Regulating this substance?
Yeah.
Um, so, yeah, I was, it's, I couldn't off the top of my head tell you what our authority is on regulating this particular substance. I mean, I, I can look into it at this conference, I can see if any other cities have been dealing with this.
Cool.
So. And, and just so you guys know, the references, you can look it up on the web. You can see, and I know that, you know, if just because it's on the web, it must be true, right? No, this is, Mayo Clinic is one of the ones that I'm referencing, just so you know.
Very good. Okay.
Thank you.
So next on the agenda are staff reports. First staff report we have this evening will be from our Public Works Director, Brian Cast.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council. I have combined the Public Works and Community Development staff reports into one larger report just so I don't have to get introduced twice each thing here going forward. So I'll start out with the public works side. I was mentioning earlier that there's some crack sealing going on. Our staff's gone out doing crack sealing, which is an important pavement preservation technique. One of the best things you can do to keep your pavement in good shape is to keep water from entering through the pavement into the subbase and crack sealing really does that, seals up the cracks, stops water from getting in in the winter. There's, that's the first of sort of many treatments and we'll, I'm sure be talking about these more in the future as we start talking capital budget for next year. But I just wanted to plant the seed in your head that it is significantly less expensive, like pennies on the dollar, to keep your roads in good shape versus letting them degrade to a point where they have to be replaced. So low-cost treatment options like crack sealing are very important to do early and often to keep your roads in good shape so that they don't need more expensive repairs down the road. We've also been doing some repainting of crosswalks throughout the downtown area here as well. On the park side, we had the opening for Riverside Park a few weeks ago, which is fantastic. Our crew was in there on advance, sort of sprucing, dusting things off and making everything look great for the ribbon cutting there. The splash pad is, the last day was Monday, we extended it out a little bit longer than typical because of the hot weather continuing, but now it seems like we're firmly into fall, so we have turned it off for the season.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, absolutely. The bucket truck that we talked about at the last council meeting, we were successful in bidding and winning that. We ended up paying $15,000 or thereabouts, including auction fees, so I feel like we got a pretty good deal on that and the crew's been working on it, sprucing it up, getting it stickered up and getting it ready to go out on the street, so.
Didn't we approve up to like 25?
25 was the, or 23, I think. It was going to be our max bid and then auction fees would have been on top of that. So I think our bid was around 13 and then there was about $2,000 of auction fees, but I feel like we did pretty well on that purchase.
Good job, Brad.
Thank you. On the wastewater side. On the wastewater side, the membrane replacement project is complete now. Both membrane bioreactors have been replaced and are back in service and functioning fantastically. So thank you to all the crew for their work on that. There's also been some other ongoing maintenance down there, standard stuff with pumps and scrubbers and the like. Over on the engineering side, the project to repave and replace the water line in the Center Road is also complete. The contractor was back a week or so ago doing some final cleanup on the parking area that they used to stage. We got some feedback that it wasn't quite as smooth as when they got there and so we had them come back and address that. The signs, they took our speed limit signs with them, so we have some new ones on order so that we can make that 35 mile an hour zone permanent. I was hoping we could change order those in, but it didn't quite work out. So anyway, we have city engineers prepared a plan, we have those signs on order and we've completed our, the study that we need to do to be able to justify that speed limit change. On the kitchen remodel at the community center, we have received a 100% design and it's now in for permitting both here at the city and at Clark County Public Health. And on the building department side, as was mentioned a little bit earlier, all the apartment complex buildings are in construction right now. They're in drywall and plumbing, mechanical and electrical is all being installed in those. I also, I guess we'll hit on again, I think it was mentioned, but the Minute Mart has been torn down. I think everyone saw that, this big pile of rubble out there. So we are in the process of working with them on getting construction started and we also have the pool for the Hampton Inn under review currently. Is there any questions on that before I jump into more community development stuff? I think just a pool, I'm hoping that they let the public in there though. If, can we scroll down a little bit, we have a new exciting graph here. So previously in my building reports, we talked about the number of permits that we'd received so far this year and was discussed that it might be helpful to have a historical context. So we went back and put this and we'll continue to provide this at each monthly update going forward. But this shows the permitting cycles for the last five years here. So the light blue is new residential, single family residential, orange is multifamily residential, gray is over the counter permits, those are your mechanical plumbing, sort of smaller permits. Special is yellow, those are like decks and similar. And then the dark blue bar totals all of those building permits together up into a grand total of permit, building permits received. And then the green bar is number of land use cymbals that we have received. So looking at the trends here, you can see that we're trending down a little bit. This 2022 is just year to date, not the complete year. But being in September here, we're trending, it seems like a little bit lower on the building permit side than we have in the past. Land use, we're actually tracking pretty close to what we did last year. But building permits overall are definitely decreased quite a bit from what the, sort of the two boom years that we had over 2020 and 2021. I'll pause there again to see if there's any questions on, on that before we jump into the community development report section. All right, so if we can pull the map up here, I'll just hit a couple of brief items here. As was discussed earlier, Stevens Hillside grading is ongoing. We will, I'll work with the city engineer and we will go follow up on the dust complaints, it seems like that's an ongoing issue. And while it seemed a positive response initially from the contractor there, it still sounds like they have some work to do. So we will follow up with them on that. That is number 13 on the map there. Number 41 on the map, Physical Therapy Northwest, that is a potential tenant that we are working with to go into the old former city hall building. In order to be able to sign the lease with them, we had to be able to guarantee that the type of use that they wanted to put there would be allowed and the zoning required that we go through a conditional use permit for outpatient, they consider themselves outpatient. They're outpatient for like, you know, physical therapy sort of things, not other types of outpatient. But our code was broad enough that it just, just looked at the whole broader outpatient category as a conditional use. So we have gone through that process. We worked with the applicant to expedite that process so that we could get them in there relatively quickly and also to get it before our hearings examined, before he went out of town for a few months. So we had that hearing a few weeks ago here, the application was approved and we're working with them to finalize the lease right now. And then the last one, Stone Hill Coffee across the street, we're working with them to replace their sign. And that is number 42 on the map. With that, happy to answer any questions.
How's the lease agreement going with the old Public Works building?
We have signed that lease, they have been starting their renovations to that building and I haven't heard a solid opening date for them, but I know they were trying to get that going relatively quickly. So that's on my list of things to do to kind of check in with them and see how things are going and make sure that we're all well communicated.
Great.
All right, thank you, council.
Very good, thank you, Brian, good report. That's the only staff report we have this evening. Next on the agenda is we do have a ordinance and public hearing. Temporary use code will be discussed and Mr. Ethan Spoo, our Contract City Planner, will be presenting. And I understand he's calling in tonight, so Ethan.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
We got Ethan.
Excellent. So I apologize, same as Chief Richardson, I can't be there in person tonight. I woke up with a sore throat, so just figured it was better if I stayed away from everybody. I do have a short presentation for you tonight. And clerk, I'm actually wanting to share the screen that I have because I made some adjustments to the presentation.
Just one sec, Ethan, we'll see if we can accommodate that.
Okay, thank you. Can you see this?
Yep.
Okay, excellent. So the temporary use permit code update is something that the Planning Commission has been working on since April of this year. The basic impetus behind it is providing additional flexibility for temporary uses and businesses to establish themselves in Le Center. One of the primary ways that the, the proposed code will do this is allowing for longer validity periods than under the current code. And we'll talk about that a little bit more with you as the presentation goes on. But in addition, Planning Commission wanted to amend the code to correct some other deficiencies. For instance, by providing an exemption section in the code, by providing additional criteria that applicants and temporary use permits are reviewed by, and then lastly, by increasing the time that temporary use permits have to be removed after their permits are expired. And currently that's only 48 hours. And so we're proposing to allow them more time to remove their facilities. So taken together, the changes, as I mentioned, are going to provide greater flexibility for businesses to establish themselves in Le Center and updates would better align with the city's comprehensive plan goals. And I've called a couple of those out for you in the staff report, particularly items that pertain to encouraging business growth in Le Center. And the way that these changes can provide more flexibility is by helping to lower the initial costs for businesses to set up. One trend that you see in cities around the country is that businesses are establishing themselves as temporary uses and then moving into brick and mortar operations later on. So that, that lowers the, the threshold for entry in, into the market for them.
Hey Ethan? Is there anything you can do at your end to expand the view of your slideshow? That's a little better.
Interesting, is it not showing the whole thing or something?
That's bad, no, go back to where it was. There, leave it like that.
Thank you, Bronson.
So you're, you're seeing, I guess what I'm seeing on my screen is it's showing this slide that shows the Le Center Comprehensive Plan, is that?
Hey Ethan, did you get a lot of changes to the PowerPoint? I can just bring up the PowerPoint I have on file and so, so people can see it better.
Yeah, that's fine, and then I can sort of rely on mine for some of the changes that I made.
Okay, I'm going to do that instead. Okay, we're up.
Okay. So I'm not actually, for some reason, able to see the PowerPoint that you're displaying. It still shows that I'm sharing my screen, so.
Okay, I'll make you not enter.
So I'm on, I apologize for the hiccups here, but I'm on slide number five.
Okay. We're there.
Okay, good. And so what slide number five is showing you is really what is the only existing temporary use permit in Le Center, which is the tapping and materials project that was permitted earlier this year. And that's, you can see that from the freeway, it's located off Paradise Park Road. I'm sure most people have noticed it driving by in that area. And that temporary use permit was approved for one year. And based upon discussions with the applicant, it sounds like they're going to be applying for an extension that would take them up to three years under the new code that we're talking about tonight, under the amended code. Slide six, please. So switching gears here just a little bit to talk about some of the key changes to the temporary use code and the associated provisions, including the city's definitions section of the code. The first change that we made was to the definition section in 18.40 and that was simply to include a definition of temporary use. And then within the temporary use code in 18.265 itself, they mentioned one of the central features that we were focusing on is increasing the amount of time that temporary uses can operate in Le Center. And so there's two different processes that temporary use permits are permitted under a type one process, which is staff review without notice. And then a type two process, which is staff review with a notice to property owners within 300 feet. So the existing code allows temporary use permits under a type one process to, to exist for up to 60 days. And what we're proposing in the new code is to allow them to exist for up to six months. And then under a type two process, the existing code allows those uses initially to establish for up to three months and we're proposing to increase that to 24 months, so, so two years. So fairly substantial increase in both of those cases. Slide seven, please. And I mentioned just briefly that there's going to be an exemption section of the code and that would exempt things like garage and yard sales, city sponsored uses and activities, fireworks stands, holiday sales lots, and then temporary construction trailers and then also street vendors, which are addressed under another section of, of the city's code. Slide eight, please. So there would also be some additional criteria that applicants would be reviewed against and that would help provide applicants better guidance on what they need to do to have a temporary use permit approved because the existing criteria are very loosely defined. And it would also help staff in the review process as well as help protect adjacent property owners a little bit better. Some of the criteria that we're talking about are in front of you there on the screen. Highlights of those are in front of you on the screen. One is just talking about compatibility with surrounding uses. And that would mean that temporary use has to be one of the approved conditional or limited uses in the zone, which is proposing to locate. It has to locate completely on the site that it is proposing to locate on, which sounds a little bit funny, but it has to meet setback requirements. And has to meet parking requirements as well. So we don't want parking from temporary uses spilling out onto adjacent areas, adjacent properties. Hours of operation, this is, sorry, next slide, slide nine. Hours of operation would be standardized at 7:00 AM. Sorry, what's that?
What's the title of the slide you're looking at, Ethan? Because I think we're two behind you.
Okay. It's proposed code changes revising LCMC 18265 approval criteria. My apologies again. So as I was saying, that hours of operation would be standardized from 7:00 AM to 8:00, 8:00 PM. But if there's, there's noise, adverse noise impacts or other offsite impacts, the city could restrict hours of operation to protect those uses. There's some additional provisions regarding other types of impacts, setting a noise limit and prohibiting adverse impacts of light, vibration, smoke or glare. And then finally, requiring that hazardous materials be handled appropriately. So I'm now on to my slide 10, which is titled amending LCMC 18265. This is the one, one I changed the title on, but it talks about expirations and extensions. Do you have that in front of you?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. So in addition to sort of the initial establishment period for temporary uses, there's also the option to extend them and so we've, we've upped the extension periods as well. So under a type one temporary use permit can be extended for an additional six months. So that's an initial six months plus, plus a second six months. And then a type two temporary use permit can be extended for up to additional 12 months for a total of 36 months. And all extensions would occur under a type one process and then would have to be removed within 30 days of, of expiration. So the recommendation then for you tonight is to conduct the public hearing and accept testimony on the ordinance and the code update and approve the proposed revisions to LCMC 18265 temporary use permits. I did want to call out one last minute change we're proposing to make to the code and that is contained on page 62 of your agenda packet. If the clerk can pull that up, I think that'll help, help the council follow along with this particular change. Let me know when you have that up in front of you.
Ethan, we have a hard copy of Exhibit B in front of the council members, is that what you're going to?
Yes, and so there's, what that page should show is a section 18.265060.
So council members, if you go to the ordinance in front of you, page two, we're going to suggest a change, go down to 18.265 and then it's got 060 underlined. Is that where you're going, Ethan?
Yeah, can, can you all see that then? So the change that we're proposing there then is if you see provisions three and four, they're fairly similar, but having both of them, they're they're fairly similar, but having both of them there would be duplicative and confusing to staff and applicants. They both would allow for a type two temporary use permits to be extended up to 36 months. The wording's slightly different between those, and so we're proposing that happen is that provision number three be deleted, and that would be a little bit more consistent with what Planning Commission, the discussion with Planning Commission was. So really, those are duplicative, and we want to delete provision number three. So with that in mind, then, we'd be looking for a motion for you to adopt ordinance 2022-09, amending chapter 18265 of the La Center Municipal Code as written, with the exception that LCMC 18265-063 in Exhibit B shall be deleted. Bronson, if for some reason the wording of that wasn't exactly right, feel free to jump in.
We're prepared with a motion when we get there.
Okay, so that's, that's the end of my presentation, so be happy to answer any questions that you have. Apologize again for any technical issues there, and just let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you for not sharing your sore throat with us. I will, I do appreciate that. It was a good presentation, Ethan. I read through it today myself, and yeah, it's pretty well put together. I don't have any questions.
Good, thank you.
Any questions for council for Ethan before we open up the public hearing? Okay. So it's right now 8:02. I'd like to go ahead and open up the public hearing for public comment. If anyone would like to make a public comment, please step up to the microphone, give us your name and address, and let me know your comments to three minutes.
I did talk pretty loud. I'll use my Brona voice. My name's Curtis R. Carlson, 35915 Northwest Jenny Creek Road, La Center. I'm unclear, it's question more to comment. I didn't understand what I thought I heard, but I didn't see it in the presentation. I did try to read through this, but as a result of that COVID stuff, my bandwidth is pretty narrow. And I'm gonna use my own terminology, the conversion of a TUP into an established business, is that included in this? I guess, I don't know if that's for Bronson or if it's for...
I'd leave that to Ethan. Can you answer that question?
That's not included in this, and so at the point that a temporary use business would want to convert to a permanent use, then they would have to apply for any sort of applicable land use permits, such as a site plan review permit, you know, to establish permanent uses such as a building and parking and landscaping and those sorts of things, just like you would if you never went through the temporary use permit process. But again, this sort of allows temporary use permits a longer period of time to exist, to get to that point, to generate revenue, so that they can be positioned to convert to a permanent use.
I guess that answers my question. Thank you.
Thank you. Anywhere else in the audience that would like to comment? Can I see anybody step up to the mic? Clerk, do we have anybody calling in this evening that would like to make a public comment? And just a reminder again, if you're calling in, to remember to press star six to unmute yourself. Not hearing any comments, we'll move on to the third option. Do we have any written comments this evening, Clerk?
No written comments.
Okay. So then at 8:05, I will close the public hearing and turn it back over to council for further discussion, or if you have any questions for staff or discussion amongst yourselves.
I have no questions.
From what I read through earlier, everything looks good.
How many businesses do we have right now that are on temporary permits?
I believe currently just the Rockery, and that was sort of one of the test cases of our old code, where we found that we could make some changes to, one, to be able to extend the period that they can operate under this temporary use, and also just to make it a little bit more user-friendly, so.
And they've, obviously, my biggest concern is that they're just being educated and like talked through, which I'm sure it sounds like you are, especially if you're making all these edits, that, oh, this is what you gotta do by this time, if, yeah, all that stuff.
Yep, we've been trying to make it as easy as possible for them.
Great.
It was a good presentation. Thank you, Ethan.
Yeah. So yeah, it takes a few years for businesses to make money. So if you do a year, and then they're barely figuring it out, then, you know, if they're feeling like they have to either go or stay, it's, yeah, stuff's...
That's exactly what we were trying to address with this.
Yeah, totally.
Mayor, I move that we adopt ordinance 2022-09 as proposed, with the exception that we delete the paragraph at subsection three of LCMC 18.265.060.
Second.
It's been moved in a second to adopt ordinance 2022, amending the temporary use permit code in La Center Municipal Code 18.265. This is an ordinance, so if I could please get a roll call vote.
Councilmember Fox?
Yes.
Councilmember Casper?
Yes.
Councilmember Boyle?
Yes.
Councilmember Strobin?
Yes.
Councilmember Servini?
Yes.
The ordinance passes unanimously. Thank you, Ethan. Great presentation. Appreciate it, council. Thank you, Bronson.
Thank you, council.
So next, we move on to items removed from the consent agenda. There's one item that was removed, and it's the general sewer plan update. And if Mr. Casper could please address that and answer any questions that the council has.
Absolutely, so I'll just give a brief primer. So the general sewer plan...
Can we pull that up on the agenda, please?
So the general sewer plan, the city's required to update that, I believe, every seven years. It's a document that sets out all the sewer projects and the necessary improvements related to growth for the sewer system, and then that's reviewed and approved by the Department of Ecology. So we're coming up on the end of that seven-year cycle. I believe at our last review, Ecology had several comments that never actually got revised into the final plan, so this update will, one, meet our required seven-year update, two, integrate some of the comments that we received at our last update from Department of Ecology, and then, three, we're looking to do some additional work sort of beyond the general plan itself, and looking at some preliminary design for some of the gravity trunks that serve the junction area, and get this sewer service extended from the line that is in La Center Road out to the rest of the junction area. We're also specifically looking at our solids drying process. That's the equipment that we use to dry our bio solids, some of the more aged infrastructure of our plant. It is obsolete, no longer supported by the manufacturer, so we have to, whenever we need to repair that, have to make custom parts or have custom parts fabricated. So looking at sort of what our options are, so that we can upgrade that system over the next several years is something that we're focusing on. So in the 2022 budget, we had $25,000 budgeted. This scope would spend the $25,000 throughout the rest of this year, and then when we come and talk next week, or next meeting, excuse me, for our capital budget, we'd be looking for some additional funding in 2023 to finish out this process. $25,000 is not quite enough to get a plan update of this magnitude done, so we're looking for about a $68,000 total contract with the consultant. Then again, that'll come up as we're talking about projects for next year. So with this contract here, we're really just hoping to get started using that initial $25,000 that was budgeted, and then as we look to wrap that work up next year, we'll be talking to you about that at our next council meeting.
So this is just approval for the $25,000?
That's correct.
Okay, and then the additional $48,000 or whatever it is?
We would complete a contract amendment if that's approved by council.
Okay, because I just saw both of them on there, and I didn't know if we're looking to approve both of those, or...
Yep, yeah, we worked with the consultants, so, and I guess I neglected to mention this, but we went through a selection process. We received two consultants that made a proposal on it. Because it's a professional service, we look at our qualifications, the consultants, so we ended up selecting Ray and Osborne, and then you negotiate the scope and the fee of the process. So we worked with them to try and keep it as narrow as possible, but again, $25,000's a pretty skinny amount for a typical plan update, and even we were trying to add some additional, those additional areas that I talked about, the focus in. So we're ending up right about $68,000 total.
I know this was before you came to our city, but was the plan to split it between two different budget years, or were we kind of...
To be frank, I'm not sure.
Did we undercut it and guess it was going to be less?
As we were starting to put this project out, and again, in my past experience working on other similar plans, you know, generally, they, even for a small city like ourselves, running, you know, generally around $75,000 to $100,000 to do one of these updates, unless you have basically just no changes, and you're just sort of, you know, no growth changes, no anything, and you're just kind of giving it a quick refresher, which, but again, with the focus that we would like to do, to sort of help prime that junction area, is obviously sewer is one of the main constraints out there for getting that area of our city developed, and so once we have these preliminary designs, we'll know, you know, what sort of permitting we're looking at, what sort of costs and timelines, and then we can use that to potentially pursue grants for, you know, complete design and/or construction economic development grants. So I think it's worth spending a little bit more upfront on this plan to prime ourselves to be able to do some good work out there.
So just for clarification, and I do agree with that last statement you just made, Brian, but for clarification, back when we did the Lake Combers Agreement, I think 2018 or something like that, we were talking about the sewer plan up there at the junction, and that's when, you know, we were talking about having to have pumps and such like that. Don't we already have a plan for that area?
Yeah, so there's the, you know, there was a force main and pump station constructed that serves sort of the line that comes down the Center Road, but you still have to be able to get the sewage from, you know, the surrounding area to that pump station.
Right, that's what I'm talking about, Brian, is that already? Because I thought we had already had a plan for stuff out there.
There's some sort of high-level concepts, but again, I think the goal here is to take it from sort of the high-level concept to sort of, you know, a 15% design, actually get out there, look at the lay of the land, figure out, you know, we want to try and minimize the need to do additional pump stations, because obviously they're more expensive and more maintenance-intensive. So being able to go out there, you know, work with the property, is to walk the property, figure out, you know, the most economical way to get that sewer service out there, is sort of what we're looking to do with this.
Okay, all right, thank you. I mean, it seems very necessary that we do this. I guess just the big miss on the budget is kind of, is a little bit concerning. Obviously, this is before you or whatever, but, I mean, you yourself said that it averages around $75,000, and only budget 25 is, you know, quite a big jump, so.
Yeah.
But...
Yeah, I appreciate your explanation. I do think that it needs to be done. I think we might have gotten lucky that it's happening right at the end of one budget cycle and the beginning of another, so I think it's educational for all of us over here to hear the reasons behind that, so thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Sure. Any other questions or discussion? Okay, not hearing any. Could I get a motion to authorize the city to move forward with this?
Make a motion to authorize moving forward with the general sewer plan update.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for the city to update the general sewer plan. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
So the last item of business we have this evening is adjournment.
Actually, I'm finished business normally. I do have one quick question, since Jeff is here. Jeff, do we have any updates on the sub-area plan?
So I can give an update on that, actually. So we have the request for proposals out. I've talked to a couple firms that I know are looking at it pretty closely. Apologize, I don't have off the top of my head when those are due, but it's got to be coming up here pretty quick, so, yeah, I think we have a week or two left.
Perfect.
As we have that, it'll be similar to the process we just talked about with the general sewer plan, where we look at qualifications of the firms that submit on it. We'll have a review team that scores those proposals, and then with the selected most qualified consultant, we'll move forward and work on negotiating a budget with them.
All right, thank you. I didn't mean to put you on the spot. I don't see Jeff all the time, and so it kind of reminded me, and that's something Doug, Bob, and myself were really adamant on doing, making a few of the budget cycles. So I thank you for the update.
Absolutely.
So we have a motion for adjournment.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, council. Thank you, staff. Appreciate everybody hanging in there with us.